Exciting. Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items for Action, who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Secretary May Speak at This Time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times tonight. We have three blue cards. The first is Mr. Hussein Badun wishing to speak to the Board about Read by Third Grade Law.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Before I begin, I just wanted to quickly thank the School Board and Superintendent Malaco for the position they have taken on the Read by Third Grade Law. I also wanted to thank community members, community organizers, and especially our parents, not only in Dearborn but across the state, who've really spoken up and have made their voices heard about how they feel about this unjust legislation. My name's Hussein Badun. I've been a teacher here for a long time in Dearborn. I'm also a member of MYCORE, the Michigan Caucus of Rank and File Educators, and the reason I'm talking to you today is to discuss the faulty logic behind the Read by Third Grade Law. For those who are unaware, law was passed recently that would require all third graders who scored below a certain reading test score to repeat the third grade. And let's make one thing perfectly clear about that. There is zero data to support the idea that retaining kids will make them better readers. However, there is plenty of data that says that this law is complete nonsense. The Journal of Education Research concluded that retention at any point is associated with less optimal academic and personal social outcomes. The Journal of School Psychology concluded that the retention is an unjustifiable discriminatory educational policy. If lawmakers were serious about trying to improve the reading levels of our students, then they would be listening to the data that very clearly says that they should be addressing the poverty crisis in Michigan today. Research by Hart and Rizley found that there is a 32 million-word gap in students who come from homes of poverty. The gap has an enormous effect on how students are able to understand, respond, and be ready to learn. Studies like the one at Seton Hall show that you can literally just basically predict test scores based on whether you're rich, poor, or whether your parents have college degrees. It's that simple. Educators are very sensitive to the many traumas that our students carry into the classroom, but we must not lose sight of how poverty itself is a trauma. And it's a trauma that our families and our communities cannot easily escape from. We've seen families lack good healthcare and affordable places to live. We've seen historic tax cuts and tax breaks to corporations that starve our school districts of funds. We've seen pathetic funding for special education and mental health services, not only in Michigan but across this nation. And we've seen data that shows more than half of all American families could not afford a $500 emergency right now, right this very second, in the richest nation in the history of the universe. We can't be shocked that our students struggle to read under these circumstances. We can't be shocked that parents don't have time to read to their kids, or even just to spend time with their kids, when they have to focus so much on their day-to-day survival. Every single person working in our schools, every single day, from teachers to admins, are doing whatever they possibly can to help our students succeed. Politicians in Lansing, though, seem to have intent to do the opposite. Through legislative action, they have abandoned and literally poisoned our communities. Through legislative action, they're now telling us that we should flunk third graders instead of doing anything to make their lives easier as working families. I heard you guys in your conversation earlier mention respecting this law. One of the people who introduced this bill is a man named Tim Kelly, and that man was once on the record saying that all Muslims are capable of blowing things up. Another rep that introduced this bill, Lisa Lyons, compared teachers losing their jobs to leading pigs to slaughter. They've made their intentions very clear. And as a school district, hopefully, we can make ours as well. We're not going to let a single child suffer the emotional and social damage that comes with following a ridiculous law like this. Thank you.
Dr. Elaine?
Thank you for the eloquent comments, Mr. Badun. I just want to say that as a district, we're just concerned, I mean, I'm concerned that we have to follow the laws that we work even to change, laws that we may not believe in and think are counterproductive. But I appreciate the comments. And I would just note, it's not just politicians in Lansing. In this case, it's Lansing, but it's also in Washington as well. And they're interfering in education because they went to school, they think they're experts on education. We have a Secretary of Education who has no experience whatsoever, but this is the world we live in, it's what we have to deal with, so that is why we have to follow the law. But your comments are appreciated.
Dr. Mead?
Mr. Badun, what do you teach?
Government course.
At what level?
Ninth and 11th grade, that's it.
Thank you for your service.
He coaches, too.
Anybody else? Next blue card?
Next blue card is from Mr. Leroy Williams, wishes to speak to the Board about substitute teacher services. Might not be mister, it might be miss, I don't know. But it's mister. Hello?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. How's everyone? I come to you in order to introduce our service to you, to the district. I'm from a company called Industry-Specific Staffing, and what we do is we provide substitute teachers to a number of school districts, both public and charter and private. And with the charter schools in particular, we provide primary, we're the primary source on a number of those schools. In most public school districts that we service, we're the secondary. And in most school districts that have a primary, they rely on that primary to supply substitute teachers on a daily basis outside of that district's own substitutes that may be in the buildings. And so what we do is after that primary takes the opportunity to supply substitute teachers, there's usually a little bit of a gap where some teachers are not there and the classrooms have to make a decision. As administrators, most administrators have to make a decision as to what to do with those students. And usually, those decisions are not the best. Sometimes it may be combining classes, sometimes it may be allocating some of the students out to different classes, and in a lot of cases, it may be taking prep hours from teachers. Again, none of those are great. And so what we do is we provide the solution at that level, so almost at a last-call level, if you will. We relieve the burden that the schools have when they don't have a teacher in the classroom. And as I said, those options are not good. We also have a separate pool outside of the primary that you probably use right now in order to give you an opportunity to not only use the people that are already being called or seeing those opportunities, but we also have our pool that's separate, that's separately recruited, and it gives you guys an opportunity to get as close to 100% as humanly possible. We also have a portal, our own portal, outside of the portal that most of the schools use, the ASOP portal, in order to provide an extra service. But also, behind that, we have people in the office, even right now, working for our school districts in order to make sure we can do as good of a job as we can. So I come to introduce our service to you guys. I'd love to have an opportunity to meet with someone from the administration and maybe just have a follow-up chat with them, just to let them know what we can do and see if there's an opportunity for us.
Thank you for coming tonight. Right behind you is Director Bazey. Do you want to leave a card with her and connect with her, please?
Absolutely.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next blue card, please.
No, the one blue card decided against speaking.
Oh, okay. Next item, then.
Action items. Are there any action items on this agenda which Board members or the Superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
There is a supplement at the table. I don't know if you had a chance to see it, so. Which would be action item number 14. Are there any items you want pulled? Okay.
Apparently not.
Okay.
Okay. Move that action items numbered 1 through 14 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
Support.
Yes. We have motions that is supported. Any questions? No questions? Are there any objections? There are no objections, please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Thank you. Next item, please.
Would you like the summary?
Oh, I am so sorry. Summary, please.
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of contract to Burlington English, Inc. Number three, approval of Dearborn Speech and Sensory Center, Inc. Contract change. Number four, approval of Three Chords Therapy Travelers Contract Change. Number five, approval of contract to Train Supply, Inc. Six through nine, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Ten, approval of financial statement, that's monthly. Number eleven, approval of January 2020 graduates. Number twelve, approval of policy updates, changes per Board Report 1995. Thirteen, approval of donations. Fourteen, approval of Assistant Principal at Woodworth Middle School.
That being said, Dr. Malaco has an introduction for us.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to now call up Hanan Rita, the new Assistant Principal at Woodworth. Let's give her a big round of applause and congratulations. As she's coming up, I also know that her new principal there is Ms. Hassan, who was involved in the process. And there may be some others here, too.
My sister and my dad and my husband. I want to thank the Board and Dr. Malaco, Ms. Hassan, and the executive leadership team and my colleagues for this humbling opportunity. Most of all, I want to thank my family, my dad and my mom, who were always my role models. He's right there. And of course, I cannot. Of course, I can't forget my husband. He's been my sole supporter this whole time and has handled my stress for the past few weeks. Woodworth has been my home since I first came to this country as a refugee student. And I started out as a student there, went on to Fortson, and then I came back as a teacher there. And I am an ELD specialist and an instructional coach, and this new assistant position, principal position, is both an honor and a dream come true. I look forward to working alongside Ms. Hassan and Mr. Abdel Fattah and joining this amazing team. This is a place that is very dear to my heart, from the parents who are continuous supporters to the staff that work tirelessly every single day for our students. And finally, for our students who show every day what a true hornet is. Thank you.
Thank you. Best wishes to you.
A beautiful story. Absolutely. That's what public schools are about.
Thank you for sharing your story with us. Next item, please.
Discussion item A, Policy Updates. Policy 8330, Student Records and MASB Recommendations. Dr. Malaco, Ms. Ali Bazey.
Didn't know if David was coming up. Good evening.
Good evening.
There he is. I was like, I thought he was coming. Okay, so, policy updates. The two discussion items were discussed last month at the Board Policy Committee meeting, and Trustee McDonald had reported out on them. And so the discussion, two discussion items include student records. And so really, that's just a maintenance to make sure that we are updating the policy to align with the current law. It's no change, and it doesn't change much. It just changes it to make sure that we're according to the law. It's aligned with the law. And then the other one was several MASB recommendations for the bylaws for the Board bylaws. And so there were several updates, and again, those were all recommended by the Michigan Association of School Boards. And they previously had done quite a bit of training for our school board and for the executive team as well. Okay. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
First Budget Review, 2019, 2020. Dr. Malaco, Mr. Tom Wall.
Good evening, everybody. They're bringing it up here shortly. So this is our first budget amendment for the 2019-20 school year. If you remember, last summer, it was very volatile at the governmental level because of all the anxiety of how to do funding for roads. So we did a budget based on a lot of estimates last year, which we haven't had to do for many years. With the previous governor, he usually had it done around June 1st, so we were able to get some good numbers. But this year was based on a lot of estimates. So if you remember, we made a lot of reductions, of surplusing some staff to make sure our buildings were still, you know, staffed appropriately, but a lot tighter than we have done in previous years. And looked at some other cost savings and efficiencies in our budget. Well, the actual revenue package that eventually came through State Aid was much better than we expected, and our student count was actually slightly higher than what we estimated. Even though we estimated a loss, it came in of a lesser loss than what we expected. So those all came out to a better ending than what we expected. You still working on it?
That agenda did not come up.
So as part of our normal calendar, this is the time of year we do our first amendment. So usually, we would either talk about it in January, February, depending on the calendar. And so we talked about it today, and you'll actually have the final resolution to vote on it in March. So we're on schedule for our calendar, and this kind of starts off the whole process. We usually wait for the first revenue conference to come in, which happened earlier in January. And the governor had her State of the Union address, and actually, she came out much earlier than her budget on next year's revenue, it was much more sooner than we expected. But the revenues were very strong. So we expect a very, I guess, well-funded school year for this year for upcoming, which is good news for us. One of the things that this year specifically, if you remember, we surplus a lot of staff as we went through the budget process last year. Well, I'm happy to say that we were able to bring every one of those staff members back that wanted to come back. So we had nobody that was laid off or surplus. Everybody had a job this year at some point in the fall. So that's always good news. Now, not everybody stayed. So one of the things you'll see in this budget presentation as soon as we find it.
It's not loading. You go to my email, then I can load it.
We can follow along.
I'm not logged in. You're not logged in.
Can you draw a picture?
Draw a picture? So I'll talk about it briefly. The, one of the things that we surplus, or one of the things we saw this year, which was, you know, good for the budget but naturally good for the teaching, is we had over 130 retirements and resignations this year. We usually average 50 to 70. Now, they weren't necessarily the senior teachers that were retiring. We were seeing a lot of movement from staff from our district to other districts and in the special ed fields, you know, some of those fields. So that really helps us on a budget side point because, one, they're unexpected, so we're not ready to replace them right away, so there's a gap there. And obviously, the new person or the new staff coming in doesn't always start at a more senior level, depending on their specialty or their school assignment, they might start higher. So we actually receive a budget savings on that aspect.
I just gave it to him so he can go off with it. It's his presentation.
So you'll see that that's one of the items in here. So normally, you would see a visualization of all the budget funds. So those funds of how the general fund is separate by itself, the school special revenues, which is our food service fund and all those funds. The other thing that really changed is the debt fund, as we paid off some bonds in previous years. If you're aware that after this year, our debt mileage is expected to go down as we paid off some of the older bonds. But looking at our student counts, we're at 20,006.32 is our FTE for our student count, so that's better. We actually thought we'd be slightly lower than that, so that was a saving for us. So we lost roughly about 126 kids from the previous year, and we were estimating about a 135. So that was good for us. So our student count came in good, and I give Mr. Mashir's office a lot of credit in student services. This is a very dynamic school district that has a lot of different influences, and for them to get that close is just phenomenal. But one of the things, so that was a good plus for us, our State Aid was actually up a million dollars more than what we expected in our funding. And they also gave us a new categorical this year of roughly a 2% for special ed. So if you remember, that Dr. Malaco and I have mentioned in the past about the idea that certain students cost more to educate than others. And that was proposed in the governor's budget, but they watered it down a lot, but they did keep this additional 2% of special ed funding for us. And our special ed funding total district is roughly about $35 million. So we were able to get roughly 2%, roughly $640,000 some thousand dollars more revenue this year, just to help us offset the cost for special ed. The other thing is, I talked to the last one there, it's the 132 reductions. You know, like I said, that was a $2.4 million savings for us. Not because it was necessarily good for the instruction, because we're bringing new people, but Dearborn is very good at having the capability to help new teachers, and we have a good support system in Dearborn, and that really benefits us to have that program in place. The other thing is, since we had a large surplus this year with the bond not passing, we put additional $2 million set aside in our capital projects fund, transfer from the general fund from our operating, because we had the surplus this year. Now, we won't be able to maintain that going forward, but for this year, since we have that surplus, we can at least get a good start on some of the building projects we need that are in that short-term need. And we called all the surplus teachers back, and... So what we're also doing this year is, one of the costs in the budget is that we know that we normally have 50 to 70 retirements annually. That's what we average, even though we're on 132 this year, that as part of the hiring process is very competitive now. So we're actually going to start an early hire process. We will see some new hires of teachers coming in for high classes that might have higher class ratio, teacher class ratios, to help that teacher to kind of push into that class, help bring that teacher to pupil ratio down. And we're actually, actually get to attract hires earlier than we normally would have as our hiring process is usually until May or June. So we're actually attract some of the talent that's out there now and be able to get them in our district, knowing that that next year, they might be at a different building, but at least we get them in the building, starting to get accustomed to our culture, and they'll be better teachers come in the fall. So that's another cost that's inside the budget. As you can see, our food service program is doing very well. So some of the costs that we do, since the, all the staff on the line is still district staff, and we're going to maintain that for, as far as I could ever foresee. So they're, we're able to have some overhead costs come back to the general fund through that for utilities and staffing costs. We had to put some more money into technology. Last board meeting, you had to approve from Windows 7 going away to Windows 10. That was kind of an unexpected one, because we don't really control that field, so we had to put some additional money in that area. And unit budgets, since we had some surplus, as you're well aware, our buildings, they don't, they have their unit budget, but they don't necessarily be able to do larger purchases like equipment replacement. So we put some additional $10 per pupil in the buildings as part of this amendment to give them the opportunity to replace chairs, desks, computer tables, or other supplies that they may need. Ideally with, again, this is a one-time cost, because next year, we don't know what the funding is, so we're going to go back to our base model, but since we have surplus funds this year, we put it in the budget for them to benefit.
So their last point is per building?
$10 per pupil, per building, correct.
So there's 204...
204,000, yes. Yep. And I talked about the increase to Building and Site Fund, the retirement we talked about, and covered all that? I see I'm going the wrong way. All right, so looking at the general fund in total, so you'll see these combining statements. The first thing I want to show that in the A on the left-hand side, the 7.7, and that's where the $2 million is coming in, additional transfer to the Building and Site Fund, so that's higher than what you've seen in the previous years. And the enhancement fund, we are expected to start spending down some of the enhancement fund. If you remember, we had the big phone purchase the year before this. We are now actually looking at the emergency management system, where we actually, the TVs in the room that would give out the messages. We're looking at replacing those so they're end-of-life. So that's about a $3 million project, so that's why you see the enhancement fund mileage is paying for that, because it's a one-time cost, a good use for that. Very visible, and the public can see that's part of our safety aspect for students, so that's a big project. That's why you see that negative number going in there. On the food service side, again, you saw that our revenue is way up as the previous presentation, roughly about $12 million in revenue. So if you can see that on our capital, we're looking at spending about 1.5 million in capital replacement for the food service program. That was the Maples and Lowes Kitchen we finished this summer, and we're looking at replacing the lines at six additional schools coming up for next year. So as part of that, we have to spend down that balance. If you saw in the last board briefs, there was a letter we got from the state that roughly that we were about $1 million still overfunded. We're obviously planning for that, to get that back down. And after this year, with a higher balance, that three-month operation is actually going to be higher, so we should be okay next year, I hope. Things don't always go as planned, though, unfortunately. I can't make sure I'm going the right way. So on the total, you'll see that on the overall general fund is negative because of where we actually combined the general fund, the enhancement fund, Atlantic Fund altogether as part of the general fund. So that's why you actually see a negative in the general fund, but that's because of our spending down for the enhancement. So don't be alarmed that we're actually in an operating deficit. This is a capital deficit because of our large capital plan that we're doing in the enhancement fund. So don't be alarmed by that. But you can see, we still spend 55% of our money, that letter B, in the classroom. So majority of our budget is spent in the classroom, which is where it needs to be. The rest of it is support materials for running the district. And those are the general points I wanted to point out.
Any questions? Dr. Mead?
So what's the bad news?
Right now, there is no bad news.
That's great.
You know, so actually, we're doing very well. We had a lot of one-time money this year because of the way the funding came in and our student counts and the large reduction in new, or new staff that was coming in. With new staff, you do get a lot more energy in the district, too. Not that the more elder teachers don't do a great job, but that youth and enthusiasm. We attended the Blue Ribbon Ceremony at Lindbergh today, and just hearing those kids just roar in excitement, it just kind of builds you up and that. So it's a good thing. It breathes life into the district, and we're always changing, and we do a great job here in Dearborn.
Trustee Thorpe?
And speaking of budgets and the event earlier at Lindbergh, I had a chance to speak briefly with State Representative Abdullah Hamud, and there is strong hope that the budget will be done in June this year. I know Trustee Lane and several of us have said, it would sure be nice if we knew what was going on before the school year started.
And we did our budget.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Well, I was kind of going to ask, because we know what we've heard the governor say, but that's just the starting shot. And we know what happened last year. I don't anticipate what happened last year, to continue on, but has there been any kind of conversation that you've heard amongst other districts anticipating something sooner rather than later? And because we normally don't get anything until September to really gauge what we vote on in June.
In the revenue consensus, they look out two years forward, and all those two years forward were very positive, where in the past, they might have been very conservative and actually going down. Again, the road funding is the big issue of how they're going to handle that, but it's not tied to the package this year for school aid funds. So I have a feeling it's a legislative year, which is always also a good year for us, a legislative year, because no one wants to cut schools when they're going to go out for vote to be put back in the office. So I foresee a very positive and good funding year for this year.
And one more question. The enhancement mileage, that's up in next year?
It's up next year.
Next year, right.
And know that, again, how we did it, we booked it the first year, so we have funding for another year after that also.
Year after that. So we have two years.
Correct.
Worth of the enhancement monies, should it go away.
Correct.
And not be available to us. Okay, thank you.
And remember, this sets the base, so this budget sets the base going forward. Obviously, we'll take that $2 million additional, you know, transfer back to the general fund. All the units have a 2% increase going for next year. That'll kind of eat up that $2 million, so it'll be a good solid base to begin with, with a balanced budget. And obviously, with the new money come in, we can actually look at what we want to do going forward.
Trustee Thorpe?
So I want to make sure that I'm clear in the Wayne County mileage goes for two more years for the way we're booking it.
Correct.
They are going for an extension this year.
Correct.
So that can start to give us an idea how much longer we'll have this revenue stream so we can be able to start to budget if we need to find another way to absorb some of these costs or determine what might need to be curtailed.
Right. But just remember, the legislative did pass a rule based on the enhancement mileage that previously was just on the K-12. And now the charter schools are going to be included in that.
Right.
And that's going to be roughly about a million-dollar reduction in our allocation for Dearborn, just so you'd be aware of that. So we'll have, if it does get approved, it'll be at a lesser rate, but obviously, still, you know, 6.5 million is still a lot we can deal with in our district.
And that's a lot of ifs, because first, you got to find out whether it's going to even end up on the ballot. even end up on the ballot. Probably will. And then, does it get passed? So...
Any other questions? Mr. Walls, you started this great report with what you thought is a positive comment. To me, it was a negative comment. The fact that we're employees, especially teachers, are retiring or resigning and going to other districts. We doubled the amount this year compared to last year, if I heard right.
Correct.
Yeah. To me, I mean, teachers, I mean, I don't look at teachers as numbers with all the respect. I know what you were trying to point out, but we invest a lot in our teachers through PD and others, other ways, but for us to lose them to other districts is very concerning on my end. This is not a question, just a comment. I mean, I'm looking forward to the employee surveys that should be coming out soon, and I'm hoping that we are continuing, trying to do the exit surveys, too. There was two or three positions on today's, tonight's agenda that was very concerning for me. This is, I mean, again, real good teachers that we're losing to other districts, so that's just on my side. I know where you're coming from. Thank you very much for that report.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of correspondence. We have a letter, or I think it's a dinner invitation, from the Lebanese American Heritage Club. I don't know about anything else.
Yes, I saw that, and I think it was an email that was sent out. So if you'd like to attend, reach out to Joanne. We also got something from Commissioner Sam Bedoune. I know he's very supportive of us and very supportive of education, so that's at the table. Anybody else receive anything?
No.
I received the package, I can't get into it because it does discuss an employee. And I believe Dr. Malakha received a similar package, so I'll have you take a look at it and see if it's the same information. If it is, then just share the information you receive with the rest of the board. Can't get into it, like I said, it discusses an employee. Anything else? Next item, please.
Board member committee and organization reports.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Okay, we had a Building and Site Committee meeting tonight, and it went over quite an extensive list of projects. First off, the kitchen renovations at Maples and Laurie have been completed, and that came out of the Food Service Fund that we talked about, which can't be used for anything else. And they will now begin new projects at five other elementary schools come June, once school is out, that will upgrade the serving lines. And we know that one of the things we've heard about the new lunch program is that there's also more students participating and the lunch lines are much longer. So they are going to help to upgrade the cafeterias in order to, I guess, provide a speedier service to the students. And they're starting off with Snow, Lindbergh, Howard, Hague, Whitmer Bowls, and Long. The air conditioning update, everybody would be happy to hear, it's complete, okay? Every building from high school through elementary has at least one sizable room, be it a cafeteria or a library auditorium, that's air-conditioned to help give relief during the day for students on those days that are excessively hot. There are going to be, let's see here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, flat roof projects that are only partial roofing projects that are going to attend to some of the worst roofs. Originally, if the bond had passed, we would have hit every roof that had an issue in the district. Since the bond didn't pass, we're going to have to be a little bit more prioritized. So there will be some minimal roof replacements in only partial roof of the flat roofs that were determined to be in conditions that could deteriorate very rapidly and start to leak. So those are the ones that are being addressed first. So we, because of the lack of the bond money, have to only go after partial renovations of these flat roofs. And that's going to be at Stout, Dearborn, High, Howard, Nolan, and Salina Intermediate. And like I said, it's not going to be the complete roofs, just the parts that are in the worst shape. As stated about that, then, we were going to do a lot of parking lot asphalting with the bond money also. We can't do that now, so the only parking lot that's going to be looked at is the South Parking Lot at O.L. Smith. That's the only one. Now, I will tell you that while we heard that another $2 million is going to be transferred into the Building and Site Fund, bringing it up to $3.5 million approximately, the roof projects are going to cost over $1 million on their own. So while we're putting that money in there, it's going to be used immediately this summer and dropped down. The parking lot at O.L. Smith is only going to cost about $178,000. We're currently looking at bids for new sound systems at Bryant Middle School and Michaelberry Career Center. Because of the lack of quality in the equipment, there has now degraded so much that the usability of, and actually, at Michaelberry Career Center, their auditorium's also used as a teaching classroom. So it's really important to have these upgrades done in order to ensure quality systems. And they do have some bids out for them right now that they're looking at. The Etzel Ford High School baseball field is going to be completed this spring along with a football stadium scoreboard. And the Fortson High School baseball field, which is the last in the line of the three high schools to be renovated, is under design, and the scoreboard will be put in place there as well. They're also having to include a new exhaust fan at the Salina Intermediate Pool. It's not the pool room itself, it's the adjacent equipment area that they need to replace this exhaust fan. The pool is still usable. That's not a problem. Howe School, which is off, adjacent, near the Michaelberry Career Center, for those who aren't familiar with where Howe School was moved, needs a new chiller to help air-condition the building, which is especially important for the special education population that attends there. They're trying to limp this chiller along as long as possible because the funding for it is going to be tight. But that is going to have to be looked at. There's also been a cell tower request for here at the administration center. They're going to disguise it to look like a tree at the back of the property. We do have cell towers throughout the district that generate revenue, and this would be another one. They're also, they've continued on as we continue to have the conversation about the bond moving forward. They're looking at architect bids, knowing that we're going to need architects on board for a lot of these jobs on board. So they've continued on in the review process. They had a very healthy response to their RFP, 10 architects bid, so they will be interviewing, reviewing. It's going to be a little bit of a timely process in order to whittle down to the best person for the scope of the work that we need to have done here. So it's not something that they can just pick the lowest bidder and walk away kind of thing, because there's a lot of detail involved in projects that need to be attended to by the architects. So that's in review. And the final thing is, moving forward with the bond conversation, we've already begun the process by meeting with some of the community members, and now we've had the conversation. Should we hire a consultant? They've interviewed three different consultants and were suggesting that they continue to move forward with finding the best consultant that would fit our, fill the bill, fit our needs here in the district to continue to progress on that conversation about what we do about bond moving forward. So that's what we directed them to do. So that's where we're at with Building and Site.
Thank you for the detailed report. Trustee Moszul?
Yep. Policy Committee, Matt, and this is a new committee, so it was more on the mission and reviewing the policies that were done by former Chair McDonald. Obviously, staff reduction policy and student records policies, which we voted on already today, were discussed. There also was a discussion on recognition policy. I would like to also bring forward three to four policies that we want to update for next meeting, so to be on the agenda for next meeting. So it was a brief meeting, just looking at those policies, and hopefully, next meeting will be as detailed of a report as Trustee Petchikoff.
Questions? Next item, please.
Oh, I'd like to mention something as far as committees. I thought there was finance also. That's why I waited. But we have a city relation, the ladies in the club here are city relations committee. So, yeah. So we'd like to, we have the agenda going out as of Wednesday. Trustee Petchikoff as former chair is doing that. So Dr. Malakha, if you have anything that needs to be on or the college as well.
Mr. Wall is our agenda filler. I'll tell you that for that.
He adds his...
Yeah, so we already know that we will have the census as an important item. We want to all get out the census as much as possible.
We want to know what we can, how we...
What things we can do. Everybody needs to be aware of it. And then, security will be on there.
Traffic.
And traffic, which is a perennial topic.
City and school district, it's always a problem.
Right. So the city, the college, and the district, so if anyone has any other important topics, please get those to us. I noticed on the board briefs also, Dr. Malakha, that apparently, we're supposed to appoint a committee. It mentioned that the board appoints a committee for professional development. I thought it was in board briefs.
For professional development, I'm trying to recall.
There was something that I thought was, and it might have just been, something was missing in, rather than this board.
It wouldn't be this board. But it was in one of her...
I saw that, too.
Yeah, I saw it, too, but I don't remember. I'd have to look. The board is to appoint a committee for professional development. I didn't know whether, I don't know where that's going.
I'll review that and get back to you.
Okay. I would like to suggest also, the college has a sustainability committee, and most large institutions do have sustainability committees because we need to be conscious of it. I brought it up on the issue of cardboard, but there's a lot of other topics, Dr. Malakha, where a small difference like this, what we order has impact on the boreal forests of Canada. We can change this. We don't have to have pure white, and we can reduce our environmental footprint. So I'd like to suggest that the district consider a sustainability committee. It doesn't have to be the board, of course. Maybe a board member would want to be on it, but it could monitor paper use. We know we use 34 million, we make 34 million copies a year. So are there ways that we can be conscious of our use of resources and can there be better ways to use those resources? So, Dr. Malakha, I did want to pass this down to you. I thought, my daughter did a study when she was in, at university. You can dry off dishes with paper towels, you could dry them off in the air, or you might dry them off with a towel, depending on the dish or depending on what you're achieving. Sometimes, one thing might be more sustainable, one thing might use more energy. But without thought, we just consume and we don't think about the impact of what we're doing. I just am proposing a sustainability committee because it might, small things that we do, like recycling and reducing, can make big impact, especially in a district of this size. So that's why I would like to propose it. I know we have a lot of students that could come up with genius ideas on things.
Students just reach out to me, and I told them, "We need to talk to Trustee Lane."
Oh, perfect.
I will share his information.
Yeah, 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 perfect. On that note, the Rouge has, Rouge River, friends of the Rouge do a lot of different trainings, and most of us think the Rouge is just something that goes through our city that we don't want to see, but someday, that river could be a resource to all of us and it could be improved. So they're asking for assistance, and it's a great opportunity for students to go and see stoneflies and other wildlife in their own backyard. So, yeah, I would like to encourage students to do that.
Before we go to the next item, did you have something to say? Go ahead.
I can add, unless you want to.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so I know with that board-appointed committee, this was related to the school calendar where the law was changed, so it was in, and it had to do with, and it was a message that came from Mr. Seaterland, and I pasted it in. So it was under school calendar. If we chose to use the 38 hours that the state is now allowing, and we've had some conversations with the union, and we don't think that there'll probably be much for this year, because obviously, we're well into the year, but moving forward, if that was the case, then you would need a board-appointed committee just to kind of oversight, I believe, the PD that would qualify under this law that changed years ago. You could use the 38 hours towards instruction. We have a negotiated settled contract, but again, we'll continue to discuss that with the unions. That is where that is under. Only if, I believe it's only if you start using that, so we'd have to get more information on that committee. So it's not required right now, but if we chose to move in that direction, then we'd have to look at that. Thank you.
Just want to clarify something Dr. Malakha said earlier. He noticed that all the ladies are sitting on one side and the men on the other side. Just for the audience, and the audience on the other side of the camera, where we sit at the table, it depends on what positions we have on the board. So we have our treasurer, our secretary, our vice president, the order of the board, that's how it determines that. It just happened to be that. Just FYI. Next item, please.
Board member superintendent commentary.
Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, I have a few things. First of all, I am forever impressed by our students and their ability to get engaged and to really work hard at issues that are important to them and generate funds for fundraising and things like that. So I just want to commend the students that I saw on MLK Day and the work that they did. I went and helped them at the mosque. We put blankets together, and their enthusiasm is always overwhelming. And we get notices all the time about different fundraisers they're doing in schools, and our students are amazing in that regard, and I just have to give them all kudos for just being aware of needs in the community and taking action to make our community a stronger and better place, as well as the world. They do projects that not only encompass this community, but across the nation and the world. So kudos to them. I also want to congratulate our recent graduates. So I got to give them congratulations, well done, and we are proud of you. And one other thing that I just want to mention that has come to my mind, I worked the census in 2010, as did I know a lot of other folks in Dearborn. Those jobs are now coming available, they're online, so if people are looking for jobs, that might be a good source for you to take a look at. It's temporary. I think when I worked, it was almost a full year, but it's good jobs, it's important work, so keep those in mind, anybody that's interested. And maybe college students or students that are graduating over the age of 18 might be interested in that. And on the same lines, election day jobs. Election day jobs are important, too. It's just a one day, it's usually a very long day, but recently, the city council has approved the wages for that. And there's like two hours of training prior to election day and then a full day's work. But again, important work and people that are looking for just a small increase in their budgets, their income for one day of work, definitely worth taking a look at. That'll be on our city relations, too. Okay, good.
Anybody else? Trustee Moszul?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize how important the census is. It's very crucial. I encourage our parents, everybody, to participate in the census. Once it gets to you, that you fill it out, you return it to whomever's asking for it, obviously, make sure that the person who's coming to ask for your census, that they show their badge and their identification. It's how funding is being done at the federal level. I was just at the Association of Trustees for Community Colleges, and they also emphasize that. So I plead to all the parents, please fill out the census form. to all the parents, please fill out the, the, the census form. It's very crucial. I believe now, are we talking about nominating teachers? And there is a deadline next month
Correct.
For the Teacher of the Year. So if you're, please, also, if you have a favorite teacher that we'd like to nominate to that prestigious award that we give, along with the Chamber of Commerce on an annual basis, please do. There's also an upcoming elections, primary March 10th is the primary in Michigan, at least for the Democratic side. So encourage folks to go out and vote and make their voice heard on that date. So it's wishing everybody also a great upcoming winter break.
Trustee Lane?
I went to see Frozen Junior, and it was really awesome. The Stout Theater Company, which is actually drawn, draws from the entire district, is really amazing. I was really astonished by the presentation that they did. So it was really, they deserve a lot of praise. The performance, performances that they put on are really remarkable, everywhere from elementary to high school. They're phenomenal. They really are.
That was an amazing show.
Yeah.
What I'm finding out is their parents deserve a lot of praise, too.
Oh, yes.
With the schedule that Mr. Bydun split together. It was actually at the, I'm going to call it the Civic Center, but the Ford performing.
The Michael A. Guydon Theater.
Yeah, Theater, that's right. Yes, yes. Dr. Maleko, did you have something? I do have, I made a comment at the last college meeting, and it was welcomed by my colleagues, and some actually reached out to me a couple days later. Speaking of elections, we have, like, in November, you, there will be four seats up for reelection. Yeah, that's the right way to put it. We don't want to get into that, but there's four seats. So I would imagine there's going to be a lot of candidates. I want to make it very clear that our superintendent and our president cannot get involved in the elections, can't endorse. So do not put them on the spot and ask them for, you know, to endorse you. If you have questions for them, that's by all means, but for actually to endorse you, that actually happened a couple years ago, where somebody reached out to one of our executive offices and put them in a bad spot. With board members, a lot of our colleagues will be running for reelection. So we probably want to kind of stay out, but, you know, we're individuals, we can do whatever we want. So with the superintendent and the, and the president, they cannot directly or indirectly campaign or help other candidates. I mean, we, we have two professionals, very ethical individuals serving, but I just want to make sure that candidates know that. And if anybody wants to use the podium here to campaign, look what I got, Mary.
[laughing]
We're going to try to limit that as much as we can. So, yeah, don't, you know, this is a Board of Education meeting. This is not a forum for campaigning. I'm sure there will be a lot of forums held for, during campaign season. That's it. Anybody else? Next item, please.
Requests for information and/or future agenda items.
Trustee Thorpe?
I just want to mention that a couple of weeks ago, between the meetings, I talked with Dr. Maleko and Mr. Mashur to get an updated projection on the students for the next couple of years. They've already gotten that information to the full board, so I want to thank them for the quick turnaround.
Anybody else? Trustee Lane?
There is upcoming a fundraiser for the Dearborn Education Foundation. It's a Mardi Gras fundraiser, so I'd encourage everyone to attend that. And I want to mention, my mother would, would really scold me if, if I didn't mention that March is Reading Month. My mom was a
Oh, yeah.
Reading consultant, and there's almost nothing more important than being able to read. So I hope that all of us as board members will take the opportunity and read in, in one of our schools.
And we've been invited to a few.
Yes, we have.
So thanks for the invitations. It's very hard to make to a lot of them, but I'll definitely try to make a few, including my son's school.
That reminds me, I don't want to get in trouble at home. Founder's Day is coming up. I think we're all been, we're invited. I believe that's the 28th. Yeah, if you have any, if you need any information, let me know, or ask one of the PTA members. Anybody else have? I do have a couple of things I'm going to ask for. One of them is, part of it's already been discussed by Mr. Walls, but I wanted to know, when we went out for the bond last year, we were pointing out in the community that we have some immediate needs that we need to get to. I want it broken down in three categories, three categories, yeah. Immediate needs, things we need to get to within the next two years, then two to five years. I believe most of that information is there already, so we just have to compile the report and actually put a cost to it. So that's one report I'm asking for. The other one is, for the last five years, I'd like to get a report on how many teachers have it been placed on administrative leave with pay, the length of the leave, and what has been the total cost for the, for the district, annual cost the last five years. And to wrap up that report, I'd like to see, out of those employees, how many actually returned back to the district? If you have any questions, we'll, we'll talk after the meeting. Anything else? Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, February 17th, 2020, HFC Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College, Rosenau Boardroom. Monday, March 9th, 2020, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, March 16th, 2020, HFC Meeting, 7:00 PM in the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College, Rosenau Boardroom.
Thank you.
Dr. Mead, it's 8:57, and we are adjourned.
Hallelujah.
All praise to God.